Good evening, everybody, including those people who may be watching from home. It is December 4th, it's approximately 6:30, and this is the joint hearing on the school budget for, I can't believe I'm saying this, 2026-2027. I will call the school committee to order. We have Roger Bonin, April Rossi, Kevin Brazoli, and Jeff Swett as chair, and I will turn it over to the board of selectmen to call their meeting to order.
Thank you. I call the select board to order. May I have a roll call, please?
With us tonight is Mr. Jared Chadwick, myself, Sarah Corbett, and Ms. Judith Whiteside.
Thank you.
Jody?
I'd like to call the Wareham Finance Committee.
The other, with us tonight is Alan Slaven, Bernie Pidgen, Heidi, and Brianna's over there somewhere, and Jody Smith, chair. Calling the meeting to order.
Thank you. This meeting is being recorded by WCTV and our inestimable John Day, and it's also being recorded by Jamie Wixton, and who's also feverishly taking notes as she sees fit. We'll now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin the public hearing on the school budget, I'd like to embarrass someone, because it's, you know, I've been known to do that occasionally. Mr. Palladino, would you stand up, please? The Massachusetts Association of School Administrators has decided that the Wareham Public Schools has the principal of the year. Thank you, Mr. Palladino, for being here. Okay. I will now turn the meeting over to our superintendent, Dr. Matt DiAndrea, who will go through a series of slides. Unless it's really urgent, I'd like you to hold your questions until the end, and then we will be very happy to hear comments and questions from anybody in the room. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being here. I will be presenting the FY27 budget proposal. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for embarrassing the high school principal. He deserves it. Well-deserved. He works very hard, many, many hours at the, at the high school, and he really cares about the kids and the progress that they make. So, congratulations to Scott. I'd also like to say thank you to the select board, the FinCom, for all of your support over the years, and the voters of Wareham. Whenever we go to town meeting, whether it's a Warren article or the budget, it's roundly supported, and we greatly appreciate that. And I'd like to say thank you to our food department for the delicious cookies behind me. Please feel free to indulge. Okay, so we'll be presenting tonight what I'm calling a level service plus budget. Level service being that it's the current personnel and services that we provide in the school district. The plus is three and a half additional positions, which I'll talk a little bit about as we go through the presentation. So, next slide, please. Okay, what I'll be doing is I'll be going through the cost centers of the school budget. We break it into these specific areas, and we'll go through each one and talk a little bit about it and the costs associated with them. I'd like to start with the organizational chart for the district. Superintendent oversees the district. There are three director positions, and I do have a laser pointer, thanks to Mr. Chairman there. The Director of Finance, Kristen Flynn, who's right to my left, obviously oversees the budget and the grants, but also oversees our Transportation Department, facilities, and food service. So, lots of responsibilities, very important position. The Director of Teaching, Learning, and Technology is Tracy Cote. That position oversees all our curriculum, professional development, assessment, technology. Very important responsibilities. And then our Director of Student Support Services, Melissa Fay, oversees our Special Ed Department and our English language learners. Additionally, we have a Director of Beyond School Time, who also works as our past principal. She, that's Bethany Chandler, she oversees all our after-school programs and our night school. And then, of course, our three principals and their staffs, and we'll look at org charts for those buildings. So, the district expenses overall, salaries are $1,920,000. Those are essentially the administrators at central office. It's our nurses in each of our buildings and the administrative assistants in central office. I believe that also includes our facilities and grounds staff. District expenses, you'll see that, that's $5.6 million. That is a big number. The majority of that is our out-of-district tuitions, which we will be talking about a little bit more in detail on a later slide. So, moving to the high school. At the high school, I just want to point out that the town has been super supportive over the past couple of years. We have brand-new boilers, keeping that building warm as the weather gets colder, and we just recently put in a new fire alarm system. So, thank you to the, to the town for supporting those efforts. The high school organizational chart is very similar to last year's. What we're proposing for next year, I should say, is very similar to this year. It's mostly remaining the same with the addition of adding a full-time athletic director. Right now, we have a part-time or half-time athletic director. We are really looking to increase the opportunities for our kids and the participation in athletics. We're, you know, research shows that kids who are involved in athletics or other extracurricular activities after school are less likely to engage in things like substance abuse. So, we really want to reach that group and get them involved in healthy alternatives. Okay, next slide, please. We're looking at enrollment. It's expected to be roughly the same. It's challenging to predict at the high school, because we have, of course, Upper Cape and kids looking at other alternatives, charter schools and things of that nature. But we have, Scott has a pretty good grip on, on how those things unfold. So, we're looking at probably a little bit of an uptick at the high school. Special education and ELL. So, we have 182 special ed students at the high school. That's 34% of the students, and five ELL students, which is 1%. We'll, we're going to, as we go through this, each of the schools, I'm going to show you the percentage of special ed students, and you'll see that it's actually less percentage of students at the middle school and the elementary school. And we attribute that to, as we lose students to Upper Cape and other schools in the high school, most of those students are not on an IEP. So, because those students exit the district, our special ed number increases. Okay, overall summary of the high school salary, 9.8 million. Obviously, mostly people, and expenses of about $1 million for about 10.8 million at the high school. Moving on to the Wareham Middle School, we're, we're looking to just remain status quo, no new positions at the Wareham Middle School. So, this is the current org chart, and this is the one we're proposing for next year. As far as enrollment, we're looking at a, a fourth grade class coming into fifth grade that is significantly bigger than the current fifth grade and the exiting seventh grade. So, we're looking at a pretty good uptick in enrollment at, at the middle school, as you can see. Special ed numbers, and you can see it here, is 114 students, and the high school is 34, and you can see here it's 25.7%. The state is roughly 22%. So, we're a little bit higher in the district. And ELL, three students at the Wareham Middle School, which is less than 1%. We have a very, a very small ELL population compared to many other districts. And the summary of Wareham Middle School, salaries 6.1 million, and expenses about 589,000 for a $6.7 million total for Wareham Middle School. I did want to point out, and I did, I failed to point out, that the Wareham Middle School has a brand-new roof. Thank you to the town of Wareham. I think we went to the town and asked for about $8 million. Unfortunately, the, the project came in significantly less. I think it was about 4 million. But the town supported the 8 million, and that's greatly appreciated. It's a brand-new roof. We're not having the leaks that we used to have, so that is very welcome. And we also have, thanks to the town, a brand-new fire alarm system updated at the middle school. Okay, and we have a brand-new elementary school. Thank you to the town of Wareham, which is a beautiful school. We have 947, we anticipate 947 students. It is a huge school. And right now, when I, when I first started, we had four assistant principals. Principal, four assistant principals. Watching it, I thought that maybe we could reduce that. We did reduce it down to two assistant principals. Based on what I'm seeing now, we need three there. Assistant principals, they, they assist with discipline, special ed meetings, evaluations, they make connections with families, oversight of our special ed programs. There are a lot of students, there are a lot of moving parts, and we need folks to work with students and address issues, and we do need an additional assistant principal at the elementary school. We are also looking to add two paraprofessionals. We have our sub-separate programs that serve our most neediest students, and we need to staff them appropriately, and we really need a couple more paraprofessionals to provide support. Paraprofessionals, one, they support the legally required services, but they keep the classroom safe, they reduce disruptions, they help with that, help with instruction, and they can be more production, productive for the students in the programs. The elementary school, you can see again, special ed, 25%. Most of our ELL students, I think we have about 36. We're going to have another slide on that a little bit later. Thirty of them are at the elementary school, 3.1%. Okay, next slide, please. And so, overall, what's said and done at the elementary school, 11.2 million dollars in salaries and 672,000 in expenses for a little less than 12 million dollars to run the elementary school. And I do want to point out that these numbers, the salaries that I'm showing you, these include the contractual obligations, that the raises, lanes, steps, that have been agreed upon in our collective bargaining agreements. Okay, English language learners, 37 in the district, 19 former EL students. Our students, their, EL students are put on a continuum of one to six, one being a student that has very little or no English, a six is a student who is fluent in English and ready to exit the program. So, FEL students or former EL students are students that have reached, that were EL students that reached level six. Right now, of those 37 students, EL students, 24 of them are either level one or two, so they're, they have very low English skills. We have one ELL teacher and about $4,000 in expenses for that program. Transportation Department, very important. We have great drivers. One coordinator, one and a half administrative assistants to run that department, 32 drivers and 11 monitors. We do have to contract out for much of our special ed transportation. That would be for students who go to out-of-district schools, and so we need to, we're required to provide transportation for those students, and then also foster and homeless students. We, we provide a portion of the transportation for those students. And then, of course, 323,000 for supplies and fuels and physicals and things of that nature. So, it's a little over $3 million to run our transportation department. And I do want to, at this point, thank the town again for, at some point, and I think Alan Slaven is to thank for this, at some point, the Capitol Planning Committee put a regular bus replacement in, in the rotation for Capitol Planning. So, every year, we're getting a couple of buses coming in, and we can rotate out those buses that are old, that have, you know, thousands of miles, and they're ready for the graveyard. So, it's been really, really helpful to bring in newer and safer buses as we go along. So, this chart shows each of our cost centers for FY26, our current budget year, to our proposed FY27, and you can see how much each cost center is increasing. A later slide, I'm going to show what the primary drivers are for, for the increases in these, in these cost centers. So, you can see that the FY27 budget proposal prior to our offsets is 41.8 million dollars. So, we do receive other areas of revenue in the district in which we can use to offset the budget, and these are the areas that we use. Circuit breaker is a reimbursement that we receive for our special ed students who are very, very costly, and we're going to talk a little bit more about that on another slide. But because special ed costs are going up, or had been going up and continue to go up so much, the state put in place a way in which districts can receive some of that money back, and that is called circuit breaker. And we do use that to offset the budget. Title I grant, it's a federal grant, we, we receive, we use a portion of that to offset the budget. Special ed grants, we receive a school nutrition grant for 110,000. Preschool revolving, that is students who attend our preschool programs and pay tuition, and that goes into that account. Transportation revolving, that is that McKenney Vento that we vote for at town meeting every year. That's reimbursement for homeless?
Yes.
And foster?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. For, for our homeless transportation. And then, we, we share with the town a plumber that we split their salary, his salary, I should say. And so, the total offsets are 3, 3.5 million dollars. So, after those offsets, we take the 41.8 million, deduct those out, and we're looking at a $38,244,000 budget for FY27. And so, 38,244,683 minus our FY26 budget that we're currently in, and that would be a $2,155,185 increase. That is a level service with the addition of those three and a half positions that I spoke about. So, I just want to show, what is it, what is it, the primary drivers that increase the school budget? First and foremost, so, so that 2.1 million, that's off the offsets, this is before offsets. 1.6 million are salaries, salary increases, negotiations with teachers, paraprofessionals, custodians, bus drivers, all our contractual obligations. I believe, we have seven bargaining units, and so, most of that is contractual obligations, about 75% as a matter of fact. $260,000 to replace aging technology. I'm, I'm hoping that I'll be able to reduce this number. This is to replace staff Chromebooks. It also, some of our software comes out of that. Right now, we, our staff do need their laptops replaced because they're aging. We're looking at doing it in, using Chromebooks instead. They're less expensive, and we're also going to look at, maybe we can phase that in over one, over two or three years. So, hopefully, I'm hoping that we can reduce that number a little bit. Out-of-district tuition increase, 177,466. We're going to talk a little bit more about that in a later slide. Out-of-district transportation, and then curriculum and instruction supplies, that 106 is increases to our curriculum programs. Many of the programs that we use now, maybe even most of the programs are all, are online programs, and so we pay for licenses every year in order to use the programs. The literacy program at the elementary school, the math program at the elementary school, they're all, they're all online, and that's the increase for that. And so, you can see, all said and done, it's 2.3 million dollar increase before offsets. All right. This is, I wanted to talk a little bit about our out-of-district tuitions. So, my understanding is there's been a little bit of confusion about, when we get to this slide, what we're actually talking about. So, I'm going to try to explain it. If I'm telling you something, you already know, I apologize. This is not students whose school choice to another district. These are, when it, when you look at the second and third row, the Tuition Special Ed Collaborative, Tuition Special Ed Private, these are students that were in the district, okay? And we have done everything possible to keep them in their home schools here. But they need far greater support than we can provide here in the district. And so, we need to tuition them to another school that can give them the services that they need. And that is determined by the IEP team if that needs to be done. So, you can see, and that, that first line is, is not special ed, so it's, it's, I want to make sure I differentiate that. Bristol County Ag High School, we have two students who go to Bristol Aggie. If a student wants to go to a vocational school and Upper Cape does not provide the program that they would like to participate in, they can go to another vocational school, and we pay the tuition. So, Bristol County has an equine program that we have a couple students that are participating in, and we pay their tuition for that. The other two lines are our students that are special ed students that we don't have the resources here in the district to meet their needs and educate them, and so we have to tuition them out. They can go to a collaborative, which is a public, it is considered a public school, but there is a tuition involved, and so we spend 1.3 million to send 14 students to a collaborative, and then there are private special ed schools, and we have 19 students that attend, and that's 2.8 million. So, you can see, all said and done, it's 4.2 million for our tuitions out. Primarily, most of them are those special ed programs, 58,000 for Bristol County Ag. Now, I put this slide together today, and I just wanted to, you know, one of the challenges that we have are students that we need to tuition out. And the numbers, the number across the bottom, if you look at the row right across the bottom where it's 45, 38, 46, 48, 43, those are the number of students that we tuition out. Okay, so, in 2020, there were 45 students that we had to tuition out. 2021, 38. And you can see, as we go across, that we have been pretty good or pretty steady across the years. It's been about 45, 48, high, 42 of the number of students out. But look at the tuitions. The tuitions, there was a dip, you can see, 2021, 22. I think that may have been COVID-related, because some, because some schools shut down, and so there was tuition that didn't need to be paid. But then you can see, 2023, 24, 25, and it's continually rising, and this is becoming very, very challenging for us. We pay for this out of our budget. This is, this is what circuit breaker looks at, a part of circuit breaker, looks at, to get us some of that money back, which is tremendously helpful. But as this increases, it becomes increasingly challenging. You can see that from, you know, 2019 to 2027, it virtually doubled from 2 million to 4 million dollars in tuitions. Okay, next slide, please. All right, so, bottom line, total budget, 38.2 million, looking for a 2.1 increase, I did want to share, we have made, you know, over the, the last three years that I've been here, these are cuts that have been made since I've been here. This is about, when I did the math, it's probably between 2.5, 3 million dollars in So, we, you know, we, we have been reducing our, our personnel. We are getting very, very thin. We, we have increasing needs of students. They're coming to us not as well-prepared as we want. They're coming to us with many emotional, social, academic challenges, and we really need people, we need staff, to work with these students. And so, that, that's generally it. I did, I know there's been a lot of talk, go ahead, we'll go to the last slide. I did add this as level service gold. This was, this was like, you know, if, if money was not an issue, you know, what, what would, what would we say we want in the district? And so, these would be additional positions that we would really like, you know, eight paraprofessionals, those would all go into kindergartens. Our kindergartens, I think we have one paraprofessional that shared Our kindergartens, I think we have one paraprofessional that shared between all the kindergartens. That, you know, if you've ever spent ten minutes in a classroom of eighteen five-year-olds, it is very, very challenging, and these teachers spend hours in there, and they do a terrific job, but they really do need additional set of hands. Interventionists in the elementary school, in middle school, to work with kids that are falling behind, taking time, giving them small group or one-on-one instruction to help them get caught up. Social workers to work with kids that come to, to school with, with emotional challenges coming from broken homes. They're not in a state of mind to learn. They really need someone to help get them settled. ELL teacher, we really could, we have thirty-six, thirty-seven, actually, ELL students, but we're not meeting the recommended minutes that we really could provide those students. So a halftime would be tremendously helpful. And then some administrative assistant support at the, at the, at the middle school is needed. So I just, I did want to share that. I just think it's important, as superintendent, that I share with you, you know, if we, if we really, if we had the money, you know, this is what our schools would need. However, I recognize that, you know, money doesn't grow on trees. I recognize, and I know, as I've always said, you guys have been so supportive through the years, but that's why I said, let's do this level service plus. What are the positions that we really think will be beneficial and helpful to our schools and our students? And so that's the proposal, what we came up with. So that's my presentation, and I have, you know, our admin team is here, and we welcome your, your questions.
Thank you, Dr. DeAndrea. So as I said at the beginning, any comments, questions, more than welcome. Don't bite your tongue, we want to hear them. Yes?
I got quite a few. I wrote these out, I'm not going to lie, they might come in.
Can you hear me now? All right, I'm not going to lie, I had a little bit of help from AI on this. Learning that from my son. First, I want to let you guys know, I appreciate the hard work and dedication of the staff and the schools of Wareham. My purpose presenting these questions is to foster an open and constructive discussion, driven by my deep passion for ensuring every child has what they need to succeed. One of my concerns is the long-term enrollment of Wareham High School, particularly in light of recent development at Upper Cape Tech. Upper Cape Tech's new academic pathway, the new state law regarding the trade school lottery system, combined with UCT's recent policy change, poses a significant risk to Wareham High School enrollment. UCT now allows students who decide against a trade pathway to remain and complete a full academic program. And this option will be open to all new participants, applicants, next year, regardless of their interest in the trade. Your prediction in your slides, your prediction is a loss of twenty-seven students from eighth grade to ninth grade next year, but the potential could be much greater. Currently, fifty-two Wareham eighth graders have already applied and are set for acceptance at UCT's class of twenty-thirty, and an upcoming tour on the seventeenth may increase this number. With UCT's expanding towards its nine-hundred-and-seventy-five student capacity, the entire Wareham eighth grade class of one-hundred-and-fifty-one could potentially apply and be accepted. The critical question is, the loss of a hundred students to UCT would cripple our school system in the long run. Recognizing the right of every child to choose their educational path, what proactive and initiative steps can we take as a community to retain our students and furthermore, make Wareham High School a more appealing choice for students with, from other surrounding communities?
So, so you said, just going back to what you said, you said a hundred-and-fifty-two?
Hundred-and-fifty-one.
Hundred-and-fifty, that's the size of the freshman class at UCT?
No, that's the size of your eighth grade class right now. Yes, a hundred students enrolled and twenty-five, twenty-six in eighth grade, a hundred-and-fifty-one. And then projected enrollment for twenty-six, twenty-seven is a hundred-and-twenty-four, which would be, if my math is right, twenty-seven students.
So, so how many, how many kids in a freshman class at UCT?
There, right now, I don't have that one off the top of my head. I don't, I don't know what they have this year for class. But this is for our students. You guys have losing, projected enrollment, a hundred-and-twenty-four students for the next year's class of freshmen, eighth grade going into freshman, with a loss of twenty-seven students. But Upper Cape Tech has already accepted fifty-two Wareham eighth graders. So we're going to be losing a lot more than twenty-seven, and there's a possibility of them taking more because their application deadline is January fifth. Basically, my concern is it could decimate our high school leading into the future, especially with the new program that they're unraveling.
My understanding is it's been pretty consistent, I'm going to have to defer to Mr. Palladino here. It's been pretty consistent, the number of students that we've had that have attended Upper Cape Tech. And I know that there are these changes, but I don't, you know, I, I don't think it's potential that they, they could take all of our students. Especially when, when there's other, other districts as part of the, of the region.
Their average class size is about two-hundred students. So if they took a hundred-and-fifty from Wareham, they wouldn't be able to service the other students. They have a cap of about fifty-five students, they haven't reached that in the last few years. I spoke with the principal yesterday, so, and the acceptance, from what I understand, don't come out until after January. So I'm not sure how we know all those kids have been accepted.
Fifty-two Wareham eighth graders have already applied, and they are set for acceptance. They are set for acceptance.
He told me that doesn't come out until January.
And, let's see, twenty?
And we have pathways at Wareham High School as well.
All right, I'm just, my, my whole point with this thing is, I'm not slamming you guys or anything like that. You know I love the schools, and you know I love Wareham. My thing is I want to keep people here.
I don't see them accepting a hundred-and-fifty Wareham students.
That's my fear.
I spoke with the principal yesterday.
All right.
He said he's having trouble, he's having trouble filling fifty slots, is what he told me yesterday.
All right, I, I just.
So I don't know.
So to your point, we don't want to lose any of them, too. I mean, we, we want to keep them here, and we're looking, you know, we, we've, we're looking, we just opened a preschool there, which we have student, at our school, at Wareham High School. We opened a preschool, we have high school students working in there. We, we brought in an EMT program. We, we have now American Sign Language as a class. We have the pathways that, that Mr. Palladino is speaking about. We're looking to expand opportunities at the high school that make it more attractive. And we talk about, you know, I talked about expanding the athletic director and increasing participation. If we can get them in eighth grade, getting, participating in sports, get them more into school spirit. So, you know, it's, it's a, it's a tough battle. You know, Upper Cape Tech has these opportunities that we can't offer because they offer it. But we are looking at ways of alternatives that make us, you know, attractive.
Sorry, the uninitiated that are listening, pathways, could you just?
Sure. So, so pathways are basically courses that are aligned to various kind of majors, if you will, in, in, in high school. So the students have an opportunity to go through those pathways and eventually go on to college to major in those areas. We have some science pathways at the school right now, and obviously, we have a business pathway through DECA. So every school is, is creating a couple of pathways. Some of the larger schools may have, you know, four or five pathways. And so it's a great opportunity, if a student is really interested in a certain field of study, to really become entrenched in a lot of extra classes that will really bode well for them in the future if they're going on to, to study that in college.
Okay, and please realize, you guys know I love you, and, and I say that from the bottom of my heart, I do. I support you guys in any way I possibly can. I mean, I talked to Scott about the, oh my God, I just blanked out.
We talk a lot.
Yeah, Scott, what were we talking about, the thing for the medical?
The EMT?
Yeah, it was, what do you call, oh my God, I'm blanking out. What do you call it that you get for going to college? You can, a scholarship, thank you, oh my Lord, holy.
We give out a lot of those.
Yes, no, I, I, I am, I told you, I am looking into the research of seeing how we can do a scholarship program for kids interested in going into the medical field, because the paramedic program is upwards of twenty thousand plus right now. So a kid that comes out of this EMT program, right out of high school, is not going to be able to afford that, even within a two-year span, be able to afford that. So, I love you guys, don't think I don't. I just want to make, make parents realize everything that's going on and how we want to keep them here. Next one, there appears, so there, and I know this because of my kids, there appears to be a longstanding counterproductive tension between Wareham High School and UCT, which is ultimately detrimental to students. Declining Wareham enrollment at UCT, despite the high numbers of applicants, the total enrollment of Wareham students at UCT has been declining. Twenty-twenty-three, we had two-hundred-and-sixty-three students up there, and twenty-twenty-four, we had two-hundred-and-forty-five students. Current year is two-hundred-and-twenty-seven students. I understand that UCT was not allowed to present to seventh graders last year, and I know this for a fact from my own son being in that grade, which suggests a fear of losing students is influencing cooperation. Having personal experience, the challenge of learning disabilities, and having been steered away from a non-college pathway, only to find great success working with my hands, I know firsthand the value of vocational education for many students. How can the administration of UCT and Wareham High School overcome their fear of student loss and work collaboratively to ensure that all Wareham students are fully informed of their options, putting the children's best interests first?
But I think you brought it up earlier. We have a field trip going out in less than two weeks to Upper Cape. I speak to the principal often, I have a great relationship with Josh Greeley, and with all the staff there, actually. They have X number of spots, excuse me, for Wareham, they have X number of spots. They struggle to fill them, but they come close to filling them. We, they have a declining enrollment, we have a declining enrollment. So we're all kind of, you know, challenged with, the teenage population has decreased drastically, not just in Wareham, but on the Cape as well. So we're all in that, these challenging times, but our kids have access to it. They have the opportunity to share with the field trip, and I think they've done a pretty good job of making sure that students from Wareham, not just this year, but in many years in the past, know about the programs that they offer. And as Dr. DeAndrea said, you know, if they want to, if kids want to learn about plumbing, electrical, HVAC, et cetera, there are great opportunities for them there, and we can't replicate that, obviously, at Wareham High School.
I, I'm confused, because what you just said was January fifth or something is the decision time.
Yes.
And you're having kids go in two weeks? That means that kids will have one week to make up their mind.
The deadline, I believe, is the end of January, and we're not the only school that are.
January fifth.
It's January fifth, but we're not the only school running field trips there.
Yeah, Falmouth is still also.
But what I'm saying is that, and I'm following up on what Mr. Chadwick has said, the appearance is that you have not given the students an opportunity, an earlier opportunity, to make choices that may or may not benefit them.
Can I say one thing there? So the problem with that, and I, I will say this, is with this new law going into effect, from everything I've read for it, it literally is here. They, and I'll, I'll say this with that, it's really been open and confusing. Some schools, right off the bat, yes, but Wareham's not the last one, Falmouth is the last one.
We have an agreement with our pathway, which, our pathway, our policy, which is hopefully going to be voted on at our next school committee meeting, that we will have these prior to December first moving forward. Everything kind of came to us very late in the fall, so we're kind of building this plane while it's in the air. But moving forward, it'll be prior to December first.
We were notified in August that we have to develop this policy where they, they go to visit the school. All, all districts were required to. So we went through the process, and it was, I wasn't really even familiar with it, saying you have to do this. So, and I had to say it had these certain components, and so I had to really learn, what is it that they're looking for, all superintendents? We're all talking to each other, we're all sending each other different ideas, thoughts, what is Mass recommending? And so it does have a December first date now in the policy, but because it was this year, and they're like, hurry up and do it, hurry up and do it, hurry up and do it, we're not doing it before December first, it's going to happen in December. But going forward, the policy's going to say that visit has to happen before December first.
I will say, without getting in trouble for the language I'm going to use, the state gave a piss-poor way of planning this out. It was last minute, and here, you have to do this. So, was there anybody, all right, thank you.
You still have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Where was I? So feedback from past students indicate that class disruptions over the years from unmotivated students, or those acting out due to fear of learning disabilities, are negatively impacting the learning environment of those who wish to succeed. Obviously, given the financial constraints on our taxpayers, what are the steps we can rapidly take and cost-effectively reintroduce the alternative school program? I know, and I've seen from history.
Step one, get the annex back, check, got it done. Get it ready, check, got it done. Thank you again to, to the town. So now we have to figure out, we have the past night program there. We have to figure out how we can staff and transition students over there. It's not as easy as saying, we're just going to do it. It impacts their IEP, there needs to be a team and parent decision in order to allow that to happen. So those are the things that, the steps that we're going to have to take. But that, that is a goal, we've taken some steps to get there, and I'm hoping we can continue the progress in that direction. The challenge is the budget, you know? When you're saying we got to staff it, it's like, okay, well, where's that money going to come from?
What can I or we do to help that move along faster?
Vote yes on the budget, on the budget gold, and give us the support that we need.
Unfortunately, I can't make money pop on a thin air.
You have helped, I mean, the support we got to get the building back, to upgrade the building, has helped. And as Ms. Rossi said, it's, it's a funding thing. So, I mean, yeah, it's, it's the staffing of it that, and people cost money.
Can I piggyback off of that question? Last year, that was one of my questions, was getting that annex program, program back up. I know, obviously, like you're saying, there's a lot of steps that need to go into that. And specifically, the cost of tuitioning out to those collaborative schools. What are the needs that are not being met for those students that could not be met in the annex schools?
Melissa's behind you.
She can take my spot, thank you.
So we have, in the last nine years since I've been here, our programs have become, I don't mean to not.
No, that's fine.
I can turn and look at you, I'm sorry. Yeah, the last nine years since I've been here, we've really upped our programming and lowered the amount of students that are out of district. The issue is and will remain staffing, because the amount of staffing and the special, the specialists that we require to manage these classrooms safely, so that these students are able to learn, you know, share space with their typical peers, be able to have access to, you know, the life of the, of the school, take staff to make that be done safely. The needs of our students over the past nine years and over the past, I would say, two decades since I've been in special ed, in my position, it seems like we're getting more and more high-need students coming into the district, and some are just not, we're just not able to staff appropriately. So could I keep my programs or bring students back into our district? Yes, if I was staffed properly. Could it save us? Yes, if I was staffed properly. Um, could it save us money? Absolutely. But somebody's got to give me the ability to be able to hire the staff that we need to make that happen in a safe way. And right now, I'm, I could think of four or five staff that I would need in place to even be able to bring back four or five students.
And what would those positions be?
Um, I would need another board-certified behavior analyst, so B CBA at the elementary school. Uh, we would need more counselors. And I would say, right now, my, my major focus is the elementary school. Um, I, I do believe that, um, and Dr. Russo is here, but I do believe that the middle school could also use another counselor. We absolutely need another assistant principal of special ed. Um, at the elementary school, there's one at the middle school, there's one at the high school. That position does not exist. At the elementary school, which is our largest school and our largest population of special ed students. So those are the, those are the barriers for us. So we do a lot. And if you look at, you know, the 1,980, I think, students that we have, um, last I checked, when I was writing a grant, out of those 1,980, basically a third of them are special education. Our staff, as compared to districts our size and larger, we have many more specialized staff. So related service, speech, occupational therapy, physical therapy, board-certified behavior analysts, social workers. All of these pieces that we have, the needs of the students, we can meet them most of the time, but not always. Um, and, and a lot of our students too that are out require nursing. So they need one-to-one nurses, um, throughout the day on transportation. So those are all costs that, you know, kind of make things even more difficult for us to be able to service those students in-house. We always want to service them in-house because students deserve to be in the least restrictive environment. They deserve to have access to their school and their community and not have to get on a bus for an hour and be, you know, with other students where it's very difficult for them to have. My son was in an out-of-district placement because he's deaf and hard of hearing, and there was no program in my town. So he didn't have friends because his friends lived all over the place. So setting up a playdate is very difficult, especially if you don't have a car, if you don't have the means to do that. Because all of these students are coming, you know, feeding in from communities that are an hour in circumference of that school. So it's, it's difficult for our students, so we try really hard to keep them as long as we can. But when it becomes a safety issue, or it becomes, um, a lack of progress because we don't have what they need to be successful, then we have to make that very tough decision. And it's not one that I make lightly at all.
Thank you.
Yep.
Can I just ask, can I just interrupt a little bit? I did some quick math. The 14 kids at the, I guess, in the middle school, they're, they're $93,000 apiece roughly. And the 19 kids are $152,000 apiece. So following up on what you had said, what would it cost to actually bring those kids back in? If you're saying they need a one-on-one nurse, or they need a, you know, whatever, I don't see that it's fiscally possible.
So it wouldn't be fiscally possible to bring all of them back, but I've already done this math in my head. With about $600,000, I could probably hold on and bring back more students, but we don't have $600,000. So we have to make do with what we have. We're, we're the tightest I've ever seen us when it comes to support for our students. So I would, you know, again, I, if I had a wish list, I would love to put tons of things on that wish list to support our students. Could I bring back every student? Absolutely not. And as far as the pricing goes, it's tough to kind of average it out because we have some students that we're paying $70,000 for. We have other students that are in residential facilities that we're paying $400,000 for. So it's, it's dependent on the need, depending on how much support they need.
So does this, excellent question. Let's say you got the $600,000 to use in the LEA, okay?
Jeff, can you speak into the mic?
So let's assume you got $600,000 to use. Could you subtract $600,000 from other areas where you are sending kids out? And then the savings would be on the transportation, which you wouldn't have. Is, does that math work?
It does work. And I, I think, as, I think Mr. Palladino pointed it out, and I think I heard somebody else talking about it too, and I don't remember who, but it's a process as well. So when we build a program and try to bring students back into that program, we have to have buy-in from the parents. We can't move a child just because we say, hey, now we have program and come on back. So, and there's a process. And what happens is when a parent doesn't agree, or they're happy, let's say they're, I'm going to pick a school, the May Institute. And you have a child with autism at the May Institute, nationally known, right? Everybody wants to be at that school if, if their child has autism. If we go to that parent and they've been there three, four, or five years, and they're happy with that, the child's making progress. And then suddenly we say, hey, we just hired all these people, we'd like you to come back to district, they can say no. So we can recommend it, propose it, they can say no, and then we might end up in a situation where now we're in a legal battle. So.
I'm not suggesting it's easy.
Yeah.
But there's nothing easy about cutting, uh, staff, which is, which is what we're facing and what we've faced for the last few years. So even though the math is tough, but I still think a significant percentage of parents, the idea of their children being educated in their town, as compared to a long bus ride to Hyannis or wherever. Okay, I still think it's, it's, it's worth the difficult process. And I think even if it was a wash, as I said, the transportation would, would make the difference.
It would.
And then it's child.
Yes, I would agree.
Thank you. Well, thank you for the question.
The one calculation we're missing is the benefits package of healthcare on there.
Oh, agree completely, as I've pointed out to the superintendent on occasion. Yes, just because it doesn't show up on our budget doesn't mean it isn't real dollars. So I agree with you, which would have to be included in the calculation. Yes.
April, did you have something before I finished?
Just want to add, like, a lot of, with the concern of keeping kids in the district, both from the school choice or Upper Cape standpoint and the special ed out of district. You have to, in a lot of business, businesses you hear, you have to spend money to make money. We want people to stay here. We have to, if we're not willing to invest in our district, in our school, in our staff, in the supports that we need, why are families or parents going to buy into us when we don't want to support ourselves? You know, it's, it's really like a catch-22. You have to put that money out there. My son is a graduate Wareham. We went from first grade, when I moved here, all the way through. He applied and got into both Sturgis and Upper Cape, and he chose Wareham because he wanted to be here, because he liked the athletic programs better. He liked the classes that he had better. He had a better opportunity to explore different arts, and he was in the IB program, and he did AP classes. And he was on a 504, and he struggled with a lot of things. And he got all the support that he needed here and not anywhere else. And I know that there are a lot of other parents that believe that, and it's hard to look at numbers because numbers are black and white. But students aren't black and white. Our kids are so gray in so many areas and have so many varying needs, and our staff is incredible. And by cutting more of them, that's only incentive for people and families to take their kids out of the district. Because who wants to cut, even when you go to a store, you, you try to not go to places you know are short-staffed because you're going to be frustrated. You know, you see it now going to like Dunkin' Donuts. If they're short-staffed, not only is the staff frazzled, the customers are frazzled, right? All it does is create more chaos. So why are we going to do that to kids already coming out? We're only five years out of COVID. Kindergarten kids didn't know to not have, to not be home. They didn't get that preschool experience for a lot of time to set them up to start elementary school prepared. So now we have to go back and try to build things back. We want to instantly snap our fingers and say, well, now COVID's over. But the effect on the kids that grew up basically being born during a pandemic and then having to integrate into a public facility where they were isolated, or they were stuck home in situations that we wouldn't wish on ourselves, let alone on a kid. With our homeless population, our, you know, our foster population, grandparents raising grandchildren population, and the ELL population, and all of the uncertainty and everything else, school's a safe space for so many kids. And the more we take away, the less safe it becomes for more kids. And I think our parents and our voters believe in us enough that I hope that the more we ask for, they'll, they'll believe that we believe it, and they'll want to keep our kids here. Because the more kids that we keep, the less we're paying out to those other districts. So it kind of goes hand in hand. I think you have to spend it to, to invest in it in order to get a return on that investment. We just don't invest. You don't get anything. You get no return because you're not putting anything in.
I don't think the problem is that we don't want to. I can guarantee, well, I can almost guarantee that not a single person in this room doesn't want to. It's the fact, where do we find the money? And trust me, if I won the millions tomorrow, I'd definitely be donating quite a bit to the schools. I think I only have three left. All right, a couple of quick ones up. Um, you just mentioned something about, uh, the teachers being evalued. How much time does that take up?
It takes a lot of time. I mean, it's a state-mandated program. Um, that, you know, there was a whole process to developing, uh, but it's lots of time, lots of commitment by, um, our staff.
Is there a way, can be outsourced? I, I don't know anything about this, so.
Costs money to outsource it.
Would it be cheaper to outsource it?
No.
Okay. All right, I was just curious about that. Um. Uh, the Bristol County Aggie kids, is that 58,000 altogether, or is that per?
That's altogether for the two students.
Was there, I know they're already there now, and there's really nothing we could do, but was there a way we could send them to Upper Cape Tech? And then Upper Cape Tech could be like, hey, we don't have this. I'm just.
It'd be nice.
If you could figure out a way to do that.
I, I, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, no, unfortunately.
All right.
Can, can I jump in there? $58,000 for two kids, does that include the transportation?
Uh, the Bristol County Agricultural School provides transportation.
The Bristol County Agricultural School provides transportation. We don't provide it.
All right, uh, this is it, last thing. Um, not a question, it's more or less, uh, just a statement. I pre- I previously have raised concerns, uh, with budget cuts. I noted the cuts of two field and grounds crew positions, two custodians, and the schools portion of the plumber is what I have here. Is that correct? I previously raised concerns, uh, that similar maintenance cuts led to eventual disastrous upkeep of decas, requiring a complete rehab of what had become, will need a rehab of what had become a disaster zone. We have a brand-new school, and I'm deeply concerned that these current staffing cuts will repeat the mistakes of the past. What is the plan to ensure that our, okay, I do have another question, sorry. What is the plan to ensure that our facilities, especially our new schools, are property ma- uh, properly maintained and protected from decay with a reduced maintenance staff? These questions are posed with understanding that Wareham has a, just, never mind. I, and I know money, 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 money.
Right, yeah. So we, we have, uh, an excellent facilities director, uh, who has maintenance plans, uh, for our buildings, and he's, he's on top of it. And we have our HVAC, uh, person and our plumber, and, um, they do a terrific job of overseeing the maintenance of, of the buildings and preventive maintenance and the upkeep. So I'm, I'm very confident in, in the job that they do. Uh, they're, they're very quick to respond when there are issues. And, and so I, right now, I, I feel good about that.
Okay.
So that is it.
Thank you. I appreciate the questions and comments.
No, I, I just have a thought. I'm looking at this budget, and I understand why you want the third principal at the middle, uh, elementary school. Would it be, and you, lack of a better term, putting more boots on the ground, hiring more pairs, getting more of them into the classrooms? Instead of spending it on more administration?
So there's a balance, you, you know, uh, we do, we do need someone in, at the administrative level to take care of administrative tasks, uh, that pairs would not be able to do. Certainly have an additional pairs, as you saw, the, the, the level service gold, that I would be asking for much more pairs, and I don't think any more administrators. But we do need that one administrator, uh, for the oversight of the building.
Yeah, because I was looking at, that salary, how many pairs could you put into the classrooms?
Understood.
That, that's simple.
Just a thought.
I'll piggyback off of that.
Please.
I'm biased. I'm a social worker. When you're talking about this assistant principal in the elementary school, my son's a fourth grader. Do I think his disciplinary needs would be addressed better with an assistant principal? No. I think they would be addressed with social worker, counselor, one of those other supportive staff that I do work with. So tho- those, I understand the administrative tasks of principals. And we, I think we talked about this last year too, with me. I, I just, it's very hard for me to, it's always been me growing up. You have an assistant principal, you have a principal, and then you have your supportive staff. I don't, it's very challenging to see these salaries, and then we're wondering where our money is going. It's the salaries for these higher positions. So that's just my two cents of.
I, and I, and I understand that. And, um, we have significantly reduced the number of administrated, administrative positions we've had. And, you know, as I said, uh, at the, the, the budget presentation, um, back in November, I thought four assistant principals were too many. We cut it to two, and now I feel that two i- is not enough. There just is too many, um, administrative issues that need to be addressed that, and, and another assistant principal is necessary. But I, I hear what you're saying. Social wor- another social worker would be great also. Um, and so, you, you know, you look at all these and you try to balance, you know, which way would we go?
Or you could just hire a, a assistant principal that is also a social worker, has a past of it, has a prerequisite for the position.
Is that a job plug for you?
I don't want to work there, sorry.
So I just, I, if I could just say, if it's okay, um, one thing. I think when we think about cuts, one thing that we have to think about is, um, the staff that we have. The good, strong, dedicated staff that we have. And when you stretch some of these people, and I'm thinking of not, I mean, everybody, but when I think of the caseloads of our social workers, when I think of the caseloads of our school adjustment counselors, when I think of the caseloads of our board-certified behavior analysts with the, um, population that we serve here in our town, when you stretch people too thin, they burn out, and then they want to leave. And my fear is, and has always been as we cut over the years, people's caseloads keep growing and growing and growing and growing. Eventually, people are going to say, I can go work someplace else, make a little bit more money, and not have this caseload. So that's my fear, and it's a real fear because I meet with my staff very frequently. Um, and I know their level of frustration. I watch them cry because they don't feel like they have enough time to be able to do everything that they need to do. And it frightens me that we're going to lose quality staff because we're stretching everybody so thin that they can no longer do the job that they intended to do or that they are passionate about doing. So that's just.
Very good point.
Well, there's also a lot of DESI-required reporting that the teachers and that staff need to do as well, that I think a lot of people don't factor into the time management of what they need to do because there are state requirements that need to be done, especially for those sub-separate programs. And that is a lot on the staff.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a con- one, one last comment. I just want to point out to parents, it'll be real quick. Like I've said probably 500 times already, Wareham schools, anyone wants to talk trash about it, I'll say straight out. If it wasn't for Ms. Kotay and her amazing staff, and Ms. Chandler and her amazing staff, I don't know how I would have gotten through the last, what did I say, 17? Yeah, 17 years of my life. I definitely spent many nights up, you know, admit it, crying. I've seen how this all works out, and I, I can't thank them enough, and I can't thank you guys enough. And, and trust me, if we had the money, I would give you guys everything I possibly could in my power. My fear is reducing other things in town at the same time.
Understood.
Thank you. I love you guys. I just, just know that, I do.
So if, if there are no more questions or comments, I just want to end with, with, um, a thought about how we got to this situation. I remember when I was on the finance committee, and it was over two decades ago. We are in this situation where we can't afford to, to do all the things for our citizens. And that's all our citizens, not just our children. We are in this situation, um, I would argue primarily for the following reason. When I was on the finance committee, and I think I mentioned this to Derek when we met this week, when I was on the finance committee, um, the state was paying half of the foundation budget for this town. Emphasize that, half. It was 49 and change, percent and change. I recently looked it up just to confirm what I thought was going on. I recently looked it up, just to confirm what I thought was going on. You may be shocked to know that right now, for the current, for this coming year, they're gonna be paying a little less than 30%.
Jesus.
We have lost 20% reimbursement of the foundation budget. Now, I'm specifically saying foundation budget, because the foundation budget is a little less than the actual budget that we have, because the town is generous, and it actually supports the schools more than it has to, okay? So, kudos to the town for that, okay? But what is that 20% in real dollars? It's about $6 million. So, if we were getting the same level of support from the state for our students, we would have $6 million to spend. So, yeah, maybe we take another million or so for our gold, and then the rest would go to the town for all the departments that have been cut over the years that really could use more people as well. Now, I'm gonna say something else that is, won't be very popular to some people, but here's the truth. How did we lose 20%? Because the state believes we're much richer than we think we are, because the state calculates that 50% and now 30% by saying, "How much income do your people have? And how much property value do your households have?" Those are the two factors that control the Chapter 70 reimbursement. So, as more and more wealth has been generated and coming into the town, we are still stuck with Proposition 2 and 1/2, but the state is saying, "Well, you may be stuck with Proposition 2 and 1/2, but you know what? We're gonna just keep lowering your reimbursement for your Chapter 70." And that, in my mind, is the mathematics about how we got to the place we are. Now, unfortunately, I'd love to conclude those remarks, these remarks, by saying, "And therefore, the solution is..." I don't have one. I apologize for not having a solution, but I just want everybody to understand how we got to where we are. And with that, I will take a motion for the school committee to adjourn, excuse me, to recess. Do I have a motion to recess?
Can I just add one quick question about, or one quick thing about the Chapter 70 reimbursement?
Sure.
So, as I'm on the delegate for Wareham for the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, and am the incoming vice chair of Division VII, which covers Carver, Wareham, and all the Cape and the Islands, we're not the only area struggling with declining enrollment. That's, as every superintendent and school committee in the state, I was at a conference last month with, can attest to. But one of the things that the legislative body of the Delegate Assembly had worked on is that the state is not living up to their obligation of Chapter 70 reimbursement, and MASC is actively working to, on Beacon Hill, to try to get them to fulfill what they have promised, and we are not the only district that isn't getting their full reimbursement, but it is, they're doing what they can do, and they are making that effort to have the state fulfill the promise that they had made for the actual amount of reimbursement. I don't know if or when that will happen, given the state of the universe, but that is something that MASC is working towards and fighting legislatively, to get just what was promised, so that we don't have as much of a shortfall. Again, I don't know how or when or if that will get fulfilled, but they are working to fight for what was legally obligated.
Alan?
I've been pretty quiet. State of Massachusetts over the last three or four years has spent a huge amount of money outside of actually running the state. It's got to the point where Governor Baker had a $5 billion, we'll say, slush fund put away for everybody. It's gone. If you were in Boston right now, you'll hear that the mayor of Boston is increasing all kinds of taxes, fees, et cetera. Well, our governor is doing the same thing very quietly. So, if you think you have less money right now, you're gonna have a lot less. It's time that we sit down as a state and say, "Enough is enough," and start to put people in place to understand what is needed in the state. My only comment is that everybody here in this room should be lobbying for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. And I should add, by the way, I know I promised to adjourn the school committee, but even though I fully support what the superintendent has requested, I doubt very much, although all the numbers are not in yet, as we discussed, but I expect that we will be working very constructively, as we have now for a number of years with the town, to find a budget that works for everybody. Now, I will take a second?
Yes, so moved.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? We are in recess. Board of Selectmen?
For your dear second. Is it a good man? Yes.
I'm selecting your chairman.
Jody? Take a motion to adjourn the Finance Committee? Second? All in favor? Aye. Adjourned. What time is it?
Seven.
Have a good evening, everybody, and thank you for coming.